The budget review, let's go around the room and introduce ourselves.
Shane Blazer-Meer.
J.B.M. Key, District Eight.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven.
Dennis Pollak, District Six.
Jake Cattan, District Five.
Tom Room, District Four.
Matt Zagger, District Three.
Ryan Austin, District One.
So I guess we'll just turn it over to Tim then?
Sure. Kind of the purpose of tonight's meeting is just to kind of give an overview of where the status of the 2024 budget.
To get your mic closer. There you go.
So I just kind of want to give a, you know, status of where the budget, you know, obviously you received the departmental budgets. And now I'm just kind of, you know, we kind of pieced it all together, looked at all our revenues and other expenditures and just kind of an overview of where the budget stands and some of the alternatives to, to address the, the budget. So on that first page, you'll see the, these are all, this is the tax levy by fund. So we have various funds that are partially or wholly supported by the tax levy. So you'll see all those funds. So you see a total tax levy as the budget stands today. And for 2024 of $16,465,626 compared to the tax levy last year in 2023 of $13,750,751. Now, right below that, you'll see the statutory tax levy limit. As we all know that, um, we have levy limits that we must abide by. And basically, um, I have the calculation of what our maximum allowable, uh, tax levy would be for the 2024 budget. So the first part of it is that you're allowed to increase your tax levy by the net new construction. So net new construction was .35%, which allows an increase in the tax levy budget of $42,327. Also, you're allowed to increase the tax levy for the debt service that you have to pay in 2024. So the $241,322 is the difference between last year's debt service, supported by the tax levy, and this year. Leaving a total allowable increase of $283,649. So, and then, so that's the most maximal allowable that our levy limit can go, our levy can go up. So if you add that to the 2023 tax levy, that gives us a statutory tax levy limit of $14,34,400. Which, as I just pointed out earlier, that, you know, as the budget stands now, of the levy of $16.4 million, that leaves us $2,431,226 over the maximum allowable levy limit. So, basically, we have to make adjustments to the budget to obviously reduce the amount that, that the tax levy is by that $2.4 million. On the following pages, is, I kind of laid out some of the funding alternatives or the, the options available to, to reduce that $2.4 million. The first one is expenditure reduction. Obviously, if we reduce expenditures that are supported by the tax levy, you know, that would obviously have a corresponding reduction in the tax levy. So I listed the funds there that are supported by the tax levy. Excluded from that is the debt service fund. Because obviously you can't reduce the amount that you're obligated to pay for your debt service in 2024. And also, the retiree health insurance fund isn't included there because those were benefits that were obviously promised to retirees when they, when they left employment here or retired from the city. So, total tax levy supported funds is expenditures is $34,958,000 with, and then if you look at what kind of expenditure percent reduction, we'd need about roughly a, a seven percent reduction in those expenditures. To, uh, address that $2.4 million. Also, I, I should include that in that $2.4 million that were over, that did not include any debt proceeds for street construction projects. So, um, one of the options would be the issuance of long-term debt for the street construction projects that we have, uh, budgeted for 2024. That being Ninth Street, Peach to Chestnut, Wiley Street, Eighth to Twelve, Lincoln Street, East River View Expressway to East Grand Avenue, and the Johnson Street parking lot. Also, we have two sidewalk construction projects, uh, Eighth Street South and East Grand Avenue. Those total $1,856,401. The third alternative or third option would be, as we're well aware of, you know, um, in the Act Twelve, but, uh, State Act Twelve. Their city receive, will receive $903,608 in additional supplemental county and municipal aid. Those can, uh, those shared revenue, those supplemental aids can be used for only certain specific categories, one being law enforcement, uh, fire protection, EMS. Public works, transportation, and some other categories. So I listed some of the options that we, how we could utilize, uh, that supplemental aid. Um, and basically, these are increases in those categories over, increased from 23 to 24. So I kind of listed those there in the, uh, Police Department operating budget. We have the new administrative lieutenant position, uh, new ordinance officer position, but I offset that with, because obviously we, um, had an offset on the twenty, the ordinance control budget as it was, uh, previous year, 23. And then just, uh, general wage and benefit increases for 24 for law enforcement. Uh, the police department outlay, um, some new requests over and above, um, 23 requests, uh, some block cameras and some body worn cameras and tasers. For our budget, we, we established a police department equipment replacement fund, kind of similar to what the fire department has. Whereas each year we'll put in X amount of dollars so that when they have, um, needs to replace radios, vests, and other police department equipment, they would come out of that, uh, replacement fund. Uh, in fire protection, uh, 2024 wage and benefit increases of $157,000 could be utilized. And then in public works, it would be public works construction fund projects of 249. And basically that would be the increase from 23 to 24 in our construction projects, which, uh, comes to a total utilization of supplemental county aid of $737,280. Fourth option would be is we currently have a stormwater utility fee and a transportation utility fee. Those fees could be increased to cover either the, or the stormwater utility fee could be increased to cover some of the storm sewer construction, that's being funded by the levy. And then the transportation utility fee, uh, to fund also some of that construction. But currently, I'd just like to point out is that when we established the transportation utility fee, we had a target revenue of $500,000. But right now, currently projected only to come in at $415,000. So, um, I, we're kind of looking in it with why, if Joe Exted, looking into why that target revenue hasn't been met. And that could be, some of it could be some of the credits for special assessments, but we're kind of looking into it at, at this time. Also, the last option is utilization of the tax levy capacity. Each year, I, I calculate the, uh, the levy limit based on net new construction, but on the debt service. I only include in there what the increase in the levy is year over year. But we don't, the, the city doesn't currently take the full, um, debt service levy or credit for that. So we do have available capacity that if we took that full credit of $373,840. That's kind of like basically where the, the budget kind of stands right now. I mean, obviously, over the next week or so, I'll be, uh, putting out more documents, kind of explaining some of the, the nuances of the budget and things. But I just kind of wanted, before we kind of went into the department head meetings, I kind of want the council to be say, okay, this is where we're at, you know? So as you're reviewing these budgets and things like that, you're thinking of the options that are available and, you know, and at some point, we'll have a discussion as to exactly how we want to, um, utilize some of these options to, to balance the budget.
Patrick?
Okay, on the first page that we have here, the first part, that, that's all income, is that correct?
That's, uh, the, the property tax levy in those funds. Yes.
Okay, so it's not some separate income that we get? Because I see like, um, for the EMS, that went down $269,000. That's not income that EMS generated? That's tax, tax based?
Major reason for the decrease in the property tax levy for the EMS fund was, was an allocation of staffing. So that the allocation, uh, percentages changed, uh, from 23 to 24. So now that we're at, for their staffing, 50% is allocated to fire, 50% is allocated to EMS. Whereas in the 23 budget, it was a little more heavy EMS. So that, that's why that, you see that reduction. But you'll see a corresponding, obviously, increase on the fire side.
Did that come from the fire department or did that, was that your, uh, idea to change it?
It was, it was just a discussions with, it, it's buried over the years. I think it used to be 72% fire and 28% EMS and things like that. So just kind of coming down to, and, you know, I've had discussions with the fire department exactly how do we allocate that out to get an accurate picture of what is really dedicated to EMS and what is the fire. But, you know, that would obviously probably take a time study to really look at, you know, with how they utilize their staff and what they're utilizing it for.
Okay, my other question was, any, are any of these duplicated, um, numbers from? Are they any different from what comes out of the budget that you had sent us?
No, they're not any different. What you've got is the expenditure side for the departmental budget and stuff like that. And I'm, I, I'll be working on doing a comparative with all the revenue and expenditures on it in a more of a summary form.
Okay.
So I'll be getting that to council shortly.
All of these options that you gave us, do you have a recommendation on, uh, what would be best for the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids?
Well, obviously, you know, you know, throughout the years, you know, it's been the, the standing practice that we've always issued long-term debt for our street construction projects. And I know that's been a, a, a discussed item over the past couple of years. But, you know, that was one of the things that like, you know, we, we talked about it at the committee of the whole with the ARPA funds, maybe utilizing some of the ARPA funds for reducing the amount we would have to borrow for these projects. But, you know, one of my recommendations is, is that, you know, I think what we do on an annual basis for issuing debt for street construction has been a, you know, we've done that for, for many, many years. And I know that there's concerns about, you know, the level of debt that we have, you know, it's basically right now, it's at, at the end of this year, it'll be $26 million. But, you know, when I project out what we, you know, but only really 33% of that is attributed to what we issue on an annual basis for street construction projects. You know, and you, and when I look out and I project out kind of long-term debt with what are existing debt and say, and do a hypothetical, okay, if we were going to borrow $1.8 million for our street construction projects going forward. You know, and I, you know, I look at that, it's like, you know, over the next 10 years, say 10 years from now, basically our debt would be cut in half even with borrowing for the street construction projects. A lot of what's driven up our debt over the past number of years has been kind of our, some of our bigger ticket items like the aquatic center, um, the East, East River Bank Bike Trail, um, the fire station renovation. But, you know, when you really look at it, you know, our outstanding debt right now for street is about eight, first, $8 million. So, you know, I don't feel really that that's what's driving our debt up to these levels. Obviously, the bigger ticket items. And then, obviously, you know, we, you know, with the shared revenue, you know, I think, you know, we should be utilizing that. I mean, the problem is, you know, here is, okay, when you look at, you know, wages and benefits, you know, go up each year, you know? When you look at just like a two and a half percent increase with wages and benefits, you know, that, that costs approximately $370,000. You know, and when you look at what your levy can go up to support that, you know, with net new construction is, you know, $42,000. So, I mean, I think that with, you know, obviously, we're very fortunate that, you know, we got that additional shared revenue. And I think we can use it to address some of those, you know, increases that we have year over year for like, you know, wages and benefits. And, and obviously, you know, with the new administrative lieutenant position, you know, probably the only way that we'd be able to afford that would be, you know, obviously with the supplemental aid that we receive.
So in those, in these, uh, in the shared revenue, is that reflected in the budget or would that be taken out of the budget? Like, just say, the first line item, the?
The supplemental I do not have figured into the budget at this time.
Okay.
That's why, that's why it's listed as a funding alternative.
Okay, great.
Option. So it's not built into that $2.4 million tax levy deficit.
Did, did the, uh, police chief or fire chief, did they add in, um, extra stuff in their budget? Uh, knowing that this money is there to go towards that?
I, I didn't see really any, any, uh, big ticket items come in. You know, the outlay in the fire department was pretty much, you know, what they normally ask for. Um, in the police department, um, I think the, one of the, there were kind of two, uh, items. Uh, one was, um, the, the tasers and bulletproof vests that they were looking at, you know, something where a five-year agreement where they could get those replaced and then they, or no, I'm sorry, not bulletproof vests, excuse me. The body cameras, excuse me. You know, and looking at that where they would upgrade those. And then obviously, through this agreement, like, I think halfway through the five-year contract, they replaced those, you know, with the tasers, you know, those if, if they're damaged or, you know, need repair, you know, it's covered under that. You know, and that was the one that was like a $60,000 annual hit that was, you know, above and beyond what normally is, you know, budgeted. And then, obviously, we, uh, created that police department equipment fund. But that is basically funding, you know, necessary gear, like that they use on a daily basis, bulletproof vests. And a big one was, uh, obviously, the, uh, the radios, which are a big ticket item. And so we wanted to start putting a little aside each year so that when they go to replace those radios, it isn't just a, a big budget request at, at that time that we have funds put away to help us set that cost.
Anybody else? Jake?
It's, we've changed how we've, uh, done these budget meetings over the years. But I would just like to say that I really appreciate it being brought in this form first, the tax levy analysis and the breakdown, uh, before we dive into these departmental budgets. Because it, when we have this conversation around the numbers you just went over and that are in front of us, it's very sobering to what we do all year. When we create new positions or vote on increases here or there. And then the time of reckoning comes where, put it all together and figure it out for the next year with all the decisions you've made for the year. And that's, that's on all of us. But I, I wouldn't ask of, um, Tim or, or anybody else, what, where we find the balance here in this budget. I think it's on us. And, and I think we've asked for this in previous years, so we'll go out and do it.
Right.
Tim, you want to go over the supplemental county and municipal aid, what that looks like if we were to accept that? Are there strings attached?
Well, I mean, I mean, we will get the money. I mean, it, it, it will, it's part of our shared revenue. So in July, you know, and November, we'll get that to sort through us.
Oops.
So, and, yeah, I mean, the, the only strings that are really attached is that you have to use it for certain categories. You know, and that would be the law enforcement, fire, EMS, public works, transportation. So it cannot be used for administrative purposes or anything like that. So that's why I kind of, I went and kind of went by the category and I looked at where, where we had year-over-year increases from 23 to 24. And what those were so that would be a use of those funds. Um, this is a, this is an annual revenue that we'll get each and every year, so it's not one-time money. That's the good thing, because obviously, if it was one-time money, you would not want to put it towards operating type expenditure, year-over-year expenditures. But this is something that we'll get on an annual basis. And, you know, the, the other good news with shared revenue is since they carved out one cent of the five cent sales tax. Any increase in the state's sales tax will correspond to increases in future shared revenue payments, our regular shared revenue and our supplemental aid. You know, and I know that there's been, you know, sometimes there's concerns like, okay, what happens if the economy turns bad, we go into recession, you know? And I, I was on a call with the league, kind of discussing this stuff, and, you know, that was brought up. And they, they said with the sales tax at the state, over a 40-year period, only twice has it ever declined. So I think it's, it's, it's a fairly stable revenue source. So, you know, that bodes well for, you know, increases in those, in our shared revenue going forward. Because, you know, one of the big problems with, you know, shared revenue over the years is it's been basically frozen for, for many and many years. And obviously, you have inflationary costs each year in your budget. And when a good chunk of your, you know, funding source is frozen, you know, that has created problems. So now, I mean, this is a really good thing for, you know, municipal funding is that this new shared revenue program.
Yep. Um, just, I kind of rounded off the numbers here, but just looking at this, I'm kind of going through it in my own head out loud. So we, we are short $2.4 million. And the street projects that we want to do or that are on the books right now cost $1.8 million. So we're looking at a $600,000 shortfall on the, I'm going to call it operations. I know it has to do with more than just operations, but, so we're $600,000 behind. And we did fund some stuff, well, we didn't fund it, I guess, in talking with Tim. And, you know, like, we approved certain things to certain positions. And then it got, it's got to go through finance and property in order to say, we can actually fund the position or not fund the position. So the options are still on the table to figure out how to bring that $600,000 for the operational over, overage. It's on the table as to how we want to do that, if, if we want to do it, how we want to do it. Right now, it's, it's easy to say, well, we got $900,000 to pay the $600,000 we're over, and we still have $300,000 left. So we're, it's like a win for us, like, um, that's one way to look at it, you know? Then we take out the, the, if we're taking out debt, if that's what we're going to choose to do, then we're looking at $1.8 million. Is, is there any, is there any more debt out there that we're going to be talking about? Is that it right now? Or like?
Any other projects?
I don't know, sometimes it seems like something else comes up at the end. Is there anything?
You know, other than our annual street construction project, I mean, the only other thing that might be on the horizon would be, you know, depending on, you know, the new ladder truck, you know, at a price tag of $1.8 to $2 million. That, you know, could be, you know, if it's approved, you know, we'll have to look at the funding alternatives. But, you know, that would be something that might be considered down the road.
Is that something where, I'm assuming we're not talking about that this year?
Well, I, I do believe the way Finance Committee left it is that, um, I know Todd is, uh, working on getting some cost estimates and timing of that. And that we were going to bring it back to Finance, kind of looking at the alternatives and obviously looking at the timing of those payments. Because it, it, it sounds like, you know, those, those trucks can be two to three years out.
Okay.
You know, so, um, but when Todd and I kind of get together and, and go through those, it'll be coming back to the, to the council for, for consideration. Now, depending on when it, when it's a budget issue or not, it really depends on the timing of those payments, right?
Okay.
So if it's, if we order it, obviously, we're committed to it, but, you know, obviously, it all depends on when we have to come up with the funds, if we approve the purchase of that ladder truck.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one other question about the 373840 at the levy limit capacity. Can you explain to me again, like, how that plays into the levy limits and the debt limit?
Which number?
It's in, uh, item one at the bottom of the first page, talking about the $373,840.
We don't take our full debt service adjustment. So we have that capacity built in where we could, we could adjust the debt service by that $373,000, increase it. Where we would be actually reflect, our adjustment would match what we levy in the debt service fund. And then obviously, that would create the capacity for general operating.
So outside of obviously raising the levy and the taxes, is there a reason that we don't? Is it, is it just as a cushion for the taxpayers?
Right. It's, it's kind of like a contingency account, you know, for, you know, when, if, you know, we have troubles, you know, that we have that capacity there to utilize if needed.
Do we keep relatively the same capacity every year or do we look at, does it increase? Is it kind of like a, a thing that grows?
It's, it's been that amount for a number of years.
So we just kind of keep that cushion in there?
Right. But that is a, that is an option. Also, I just want to touch on, you know, based on that $14 million allowable tax levy, uh, limit. I was able to project out what, you know, what effect that will have on our tax rate. And so basically, it would result in a 1.85% increase in the city's tax rate that if we took the full allowable levy limit of the $14 million. The good news is, is that also in Act Twelve, um, they increased the school credit funding. You know, and you, you get your tax bill and you get the school levy credit, they increased that by 27%. So the good news for, for all taxpayers around, uh, Wisconsin is that you'll, you'll likely see that credit go up. Now, that is based on a formula where they take your school district's three-year average of their, their tax levy and divide it by the three years statewide, all tax levies totaled together. And then that comes out in the calculations. So depending on how that calculation comes up will affect how much that goes up.
Okay. The first option, uh, that you've talked about is that you're saying it's a 6.95%? Like, we could reduce those categories by 6.95% in order to come to the difference that we're talking about? Is that, is that what that presented or was I not following that correctly?
What I'm basically saying, okay, here's the, here's the funds, or the funds are supported partly by the tax levy. And these are the total expenditures that, you know, if you reduce those expenditures, that would, you know, part time reduce the, the levy, the tax levy that requires support of the funds. And I just added them up to kind of come up with, you know, an overall percentage reduction. But obviously, you know, within all those budgets, there's certain things that, you know, are kind of fixed. You know, you have utilities and things like that, like, you know, light abilities could be stayed regardless. It's kind of looking at, included in there is there's no tax incremental, but that would be included there. Sewer utilities, that's fully supported by sewer utilities. Obviously, debt service is not included in that analysis. So these are just some of the, just to kind of give you an idea. You know, so, you know, so if that's an option at the council, which is, is true, that's, that's why I kind of want to put that out there. So as you're going through the departmental budget, you know, that's something that you want to consider, that, you know, obviously, the budget that the department has, that would be the time to have that discussion. Kind of like, I'm sorry.
I heard you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Also, I just, I just want to add, you know, as, I'll be putting out more information on the budget and things like that. But if there's specific items that you want more information on or you want me to look in or additional analysis, please let me know. And I can, you know, I can, I can do those for you and get you that information. And I just try to anticipate, kind of try to lay it out as best I can. But a lot of times, you know, there's obviously areas of different concern or, you know, understanding or understandability that if you want additional analysis on, just please shoot me an email and I'll be happy to put that together for you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I did have one more question. The transportation utility fee, we are bringing in four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. Is there a reason that we're not bringing in the full amount on that?
That's what we're looking into right now, as Joe Ick said, kind of working with water and light. Because based on what the, the database had and the trip charge, it was supposed to, but then we have those special assessment credits might, might be accounting for that, but...
Oh, okay.
But that's something that we're currently looking into to make sure there isn't something with the, the database or a billing error that we're not catching. But we'll be looking into that because obviously, we set the trip charge, you know, based on, on that. Also, as the models are updated, you know, those trip charges change. And so since that's the whole premise of what the transportation utility is built on, if, if that trip charge changes, we change it in our database so that we're always reflecting the most accurate, up-to-date transportation model. And so that, that could be one of the reasons too, as we make adjustments to those, that could affect, if the trip charge goes down, or number of trips, I should say, goes down, that could affect it too.
Has there been any increases in that? We did build in a, like, three percent, I believe it was, per year. Has that...
That's something that we'll look into and bring back, you know, as far as, in further budget discussions, if we want to increase that transportation utility fee by that inflationary amount. Or if it's one of those things where the council feels comfortable, maybe increasing a little bit more and start building that to use towards street construction projects, that, that could be an option also.
Okay, well, I think, I, I thought that we were all under the same understanding that it would just automatically go up by that amount. And I think that would be better than down the road trying to get a large, you know, double it or whatever the case is, so. All right, thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, and I, I also agree that, you know, looking at the stormwater utility fee, because that, the ultimate goal would be that would cover our stormwater. And, you know, taking a serious look at those fees and how, because that will help offset the construction fund. So, you know, I think we need to look at that also as an option, because really, that's what it should be doing is covering the cost of stormwater construction.
Jake?
Tim, do you have any idea what we'd have to raise to cover those costs?
Well, right now, if the stormwater utility fee covers the cost of street sweeping, storm sewer maintenance, we have obviously administrative charges and keeping the model updated, also with, you know, what water and light charges us to build that out on the utility bill. We do transfer an amount into this Public Works Construction Fund to offset some of the storm sewer construction costs. I think in the budget, we have approximately, I believe it's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Yeah, we have a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty is dedicated towards storm sewer construction. You know, in, over the past couple of years, we've, we've built up some reserves in that fund in anticipation of the One Mile Creek project. So we'll be able to use stormwater utility fee reserves to pay for that three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-dollar project for that. And then we also have a hundred thousand being transferred into the Equipment Replacement Fund to help offset the cost of the, the new sweeper. But as far as the amount of storm sewer construction, I would have to get back to you on that.
Said it was a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that goes into...
Towards construction.
Toward now, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
To answer your question, right now, three-hundred-and-eleven thousand of the storm sewer construction in twenty-twenty-four budget is not covered by the utility fee or, or transfer from the stormwater utility fund.
Okay, was that it then? Without any further discussion then, that's it, huh? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn then.
One second.
On favor, say aye. See you on Thursday for Parks and Rec and Library.